That was about one minute, so I believe we can start. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the School Board organizational meeting for Independent School District 271, Bloomington Public Schools. Today is Monday, January 11, 2021. It is 7:00 PM. The School Board meeting tonight is being conducted remotely via Google Meet. It is being livestreamed by BECTV and will be replayed for the usual BECTV replay schedule. Please consider that while most of us in this meeting or viewing this meeting are not in the same room, all of us, wherever we are in Bloomington or the metro area, are on the traditional ancestral and contemporary land of indigenous people. Bloomington Public Schools rests on the Kona land seated in the treaties of 1837 and 1851. Okay, let's go with roll call. So all board members who are present here tonight, please indicate it. Director Bibi?
Here.
Director Bennett?
Here.
Director Olson?
Here.
Director Sorum?
Here.
Director Steigaf?
Here.
Director Starks?
Here.
And Corman is here. So all board members are present today. And we're going with the Pledge of Allegiance now, so please join me in the pledge. There's our flag. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all." So next, we're gonna do the approval of the agenda. I'd like to move approval of the agenda.
Second, Steigaf.
So those in favor of approving the agenda for tonight, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. Thank you. The agenda has been approved. Good. So next in our agenda is the election of officers.
Madam Chair.
Director Bennett?
Yeah, I would like to nominate the following officer positions as a slate. And for chair, I'd like to nominate Nellie Corman. For vice chair, I'd like to nominate Don Steigaf. For clerk, I'd like to nominate Heather Starks. Treasurer, I'd like to nominate Beth Bibi. And deputy clerk, I'd like to nominate Rod Zivkovich.
Okay, very good. Is there a second?
Second, Sorum.
Are there any other nominations for officers? Are there any other nominations? And for the third time, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, then we will proceed with voting. So all those in favor of approving this list of officers, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. So those have been approved. Congratulations, everyone. And once again, thank you to all board members for putting your trust on me, once again, for one more year. Truly appreciate it. Okay. Next in our agenda, we have the recognition of students, staff, and public. On the School Board page of the district's website, there is a link for Bloomington residents, district staff, students, and parents to submit a comment to the school board. Submitted comments might be read during the recognition of the public portion of the meeting, providing that the comment is not related to topics on tonight's agenda and guidelines outlined on the comment form have been followed. We will allow up to 15 minutes to listen to public comment that has been submitted prior to the meeting. If the board receives comments that exceed the 15 minutes, those comments not read during the meeting will be shared with the school board. Should there be no comments or only a few that take less than the allotted 15 minutes, the meeting will proceed. A reminder that the school board listens to public comments and does not respond during the meeting. Typically, matters are referred to administration. Mr. Kaufman, do we have any public comment tonight?
Madam Chair, members of the boards, Superintendent Fujitake and the viewing audience. We have one submission to see received from William Schwann that reads, "The Bloomington Federation of Paraprofessionals would like to thank the school board and district leadership for their willingness to return to the bargaining table next week. With over 550 days without a contract, we look forward to this opportunity to renew our commitment to the students and families in the district and to collaborate with the district to identify innovative solutions to unpredictable challenges. We are also excited about the potential to discuss a more equitable approach to wage distribution across the district. The pandemic has shown many gaps, unmet needs of students, staff, and families in our communities, both within the school building and in the community at large. The Bloomington Federation of Paraprofessionals is eager to play a role in giving voice to these unmet needs and working with the district and community closely to address them." Madam Chair, I yield back to you. There were no other comments submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in our agenda, it's school board organization for year 2021.
Madam Chair.
Director Steigaf?
I move that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves organization items A through J for 2021 as printed on the agenda, with item C containing the names of Chair Nellie Corman, Clerk Heather Starks, and Treasurer Beth Bibi.
Is there a second?
I have a second. Director Olson?
Thank you, Director Olson. And so this part of our agenda, which is the organization for 2020, will include board meetings. Regular board meetings will continue to be held on the second and fourth Mondays of the month at 7:00 PM. And organizational items, A to J, address business, banking, and functions, operational matters, as well as board member representatives to various organizations and committees. And those are the items that are listed on tonight's agenda. The School Board met in a study session on January 4th to review the organizational matters for 2021. So we had previously met and discussed those. Okay, are there any questions or comments in relation to this part of our agenda? Hearing none, so all those in favor, on approving organization, A to J, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
And Corbin, aye. I don't think I missed anyone, right? So this item has been approved. Okay, so now we move to our next part. This is, this is a lot of papers this time in the agenda. Okay, so we're moving on to Part A. And I'd like to move approval of Part A of the agenda.
Second.
Second by Director Bennett. Part A of the agenda contains the board business, the contracts, agreements, and finances. And are there any questions or comments in relation to this part? No? Okay. So all those in favor of approving Part A of the agenda, please say aye. Let's start with Director Starks this time.
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Bibi?
Aye.
And Corbin, aye. So this one has been approved. So we're going into Part B, which is acceptance of donations. Could someone please read? I believe we have a resolution there. Director Starks? Thank you.
Resolve that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts donations, as indicated in the background, in the amount of $4,570.
Second, Steigaf.
Thank you. Superintendent, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. There's two types of donations received by the school district, monetary and value and kind. These are listed on the, in the resolution, and they'll be listed at the close of this meeting. On the TV, on the screen, on the TV screen. So administration recommends approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No comments? No? Thank you. So all those in favor of approving the donations, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Corbin, aye. Okay, so now we're going to move into our policy review. And we'll start with policy 401, equal employment opportunity. No change. So Director Bennett?
Oh yeah, so like, like we did last time with the policies, I'm just gonna go ahead and introduce all of these and read all of them, and if people have any questions, they can all go and try to answer those questions, and if I need any assistance, I'll turn to administration. So this first one is, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to policy 401, equal employment opportunity. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Steigaf.
Okay, so this policy is a mandatory policy, and there is a model policy from MSBA. And this is one of the policies that Dr. Mitchler has identified as reviewing for safe and supportive schools. And administration, since there has been no changes at MSBA, administration recommends no changes as well, and the School Board Policy Committee concurs. So Chair, if you wanna go ahead and take a vote, or if there's any, are there any questions first? No, okay. You go ahead and take the, take the roll.
Perfect. So all those in favor of approving this policy 401, no changes, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Corbin, aye. This one has been approved.
Okay, the next one, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to policy 603, curriculum development. Can I get a second, please?
Second. Director Olson?
Okay, so this is another policy that was, that was, was to be looked at from the safe and supportive schools. And this was extensively revised last November. And administration, specifically Mr. Kubis and Ms. Flotmeyer, looked through this policy with the lens of cultural proficiency and felt that we had made significant changes last year, that no further changes were necessary at this time, and the policy committee concurred. Is there anything else, Mr. Kubis, you wanted to add, or is that pretty good?
Sorry, I couldn't find the button. That's, that's sufficient with me.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions? Seeing none, go ahead and call the roll.
Perfect. All those in favor of approving that policy 603, please say aye. Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Bibi?
Aye.
And Corbin, aye. This one has been approved.
Okay, the next one, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no change to policy 606, instructional material selection. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Steigaf.
Okay, this was another one that was one of Dr. Mitchler's policies for us to review, and this was also one that was reviewed and substantial changes last year. So administration recommended no changes to policy. There is a slight change in, in regulations, just trying to make our regulations and policies conform to others that have non-gender specific terms, and those were the only changes that were made to regulations. Any questions, or did I leave anything out there, Mr. Kubis?
The, we found a error, a keystroke error that needed to be changed, but I talked to superintendent's assistant, Ms. Bunckhold, who was able to make that change. Other than that, nothing to add.
Okay, excellent. So if no questions, go ahead and call the roll.
Okay. So those in favor of approving policy 606, instructional material selection, please say aye. Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
And Director Sorum?
Aye.
And Corbin, aye. This one has been approved, too.
Okay, the next one, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 510, student activities.
Is there a second?
Second. Go ahead.
Okay, so this one, we reviewed, and we actually spent a lot of time talking about this one. And, but really, the only major changes was the, the owner of the policy has been changed from the assistant superintendent to the superintendent. And I don't think there's any much more changes in there, except to clarify the student activities and, and align procedures with laws relating to booster clubs and organizations. We have the executive director, or we have the athletics director of Kennedy here with us, Mr. Anderson, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to this?
Nope.
Oh, excellent. All right, any questions from anyone else? Okay, so go ahead and call the roll on this one.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the revised policy 510, student activities, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director Stark?
Aye.
And Corbin, aye. Approved. Thank you.
Okay, the next one, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 208, school board policies. Could I get a second, please?
Second, Bibi?
Okay, this one came, we brought before you back in October, and we had a pretty in-depth conversation with it, and trying to summarize what we were hearing from, from the board at that meeting, was that board members wanted some more time to look at policies and have more opportunity to have voice in the framing of policies. And some board members also wanted the community to have more time to see policies instead of them just coming to the, the meeting when they're being approved. So we took that back to the policy committee meeting, and we wanted to meet both those criterias of giving more voice and more transparency, but we also didn't want to get in the place of slowing down board meetings, because for those of you that were here before we had a policy committee, know that we used to take a lot of time doing policies, and it would consume a great deal of, of the work that we did on the board, so we didn't want to go away from that. So the, the changes that we've made in this, in this policy is that if this is agreed upon by the board, then moving forward, when we do policies, they'll come, we'll still meet as a policy committee, and then once they go from the policy committee, it will come to the board for discussion, but there'll be no action taken on the first night that is brought to the board. And if the majority of the board members are okay with the policy, and there's no substantial changes necessary, then it would move to the consent agenda of the next board meeting. And even if it's in the consent agenda the next meeting, that still gives board members an opportunity, if board members want to discuss it further or against the policy, they, any one board member can pull something off of the consent agenda and put it in the, in the Part B agenda. So we felt this was something that would not slow down our work, but also give more transparency and more board member voice. So does, anyone have any questions with this one? Wow, you guys are just too easy. Okay, back to Chair to call the roll on this one.
Thank you. Okay, so all those in favor in approving the revised policy 208, school board policies, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Corbin, aye. And this one has been approved, too, and it was the last one of the policies, the policy review. So thank you to the, to the policy committee for looking into all of those and bringing those recommendations. And thank you, Director Bennett. You are the chair of that committee, so thanks. Director Sorum?
Yes, Madam Chair, and Chairman of the Policy Committee. We'll see how this goes, because it is a new approach to dealing with, with our policies and getting information out and, and back. So as tonight's session was rather brief and, and easily approved, when we go into a new practice with a new policy, with some of the differences that are coming up, stand by. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item we have is board member reports. That was quick. Director Olson?
Okay, so I just wanted to let people know that it's time for the annual Bloomington United for Youth Recognition Awards for volunteers contributing to youth in our community via service or activities. There will be four different awards, one for a youth volunteer, one for a youth organization, one for an adult volunteer, and one for an adult organization, all of them contributing to youth in the community. The, the deadline for the nomination is Friday, January 29th. And to please contact either Bloomington United for Youth or Thomas Ringdahl.
Thank you, Director Olson. Who wants to go next? Director Bennett?
Thank you. Yes, I'm not sure I've told all of you guys, I've told a couple of you, but in 2017, our superintendent, Mark Zuzek, is retiring at the end of the school year. And so we are starting the process of a superintendent search, and that's being spearheaded by the Personnel Committee, which I'm on, so it's gonna be fun, gonna get to jump into that whole line of work. And we're, we're at the process now, we're looking for a, a firm to help us with the superintendent search. So I just wanted to keep you guys up, up to date on that, and I'll let you know what, what happens and updates as we go forward. And I really wanna, wanna say thanks to the superintendent, Mark Zuzek. I've only got to work with him for a year, and most of that was under COVID, but it was a, it was a great year, and I enjoyed working with him, and I wish him a lot of luck and, and peace in his retirement. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Bennett. Who would like to go next? Director Bibi?
Last Friday, I attended the Association of Metro School Districts, and they had different representatives from our legislature, and I was very pleased that all of our representatives for Bloomington attended. And a lot was discussed, there were some excellent presentations that were made on behalf of our school districts in the metro area, and talking a lot about funding. And thanks to Heather Starks and Les Fujitake, who were a part of the committee that brought some of the information to this meeting by Director Tucci Osaria from, I can't remember the exact city, but she's just very articulate, I really appreciated that. And please go to the website, they will have the presentation there. And I think from what we heard from representatives, it's gonna be a very tight year, it's gonna be a challenge. But as someone from the Legislative Committee and liaison also for MSBA, we want to advocate for enrollment forgiveness and being able to use 2019 enrollment in order to use that as the basis for funding for the 2122 school year. So if you would like to know more, you can talk with me, and I will also pass that information on to our administrative assistant, Deb Bunckhold.
Thanks, Director Bibi. Next? Come on, we have more time today. Sometimes we kind of have to skip. This is your chance. Might be the only chance in a long time. You never know. No one else? Director Starks? No? No? All right. Well, once again, thank you for allowing me to be your chair for another year. I'm looking forward to continue to work with you. You definitely make my job a lot more meaningful and possible, you know, with your continuous feedback, which I hope that I continue to receive. So please, please communicate with me if you have those questions, if you have concerns, let me know. I, I have shared with you, I don't know if you remember, if you ever went there, but I have shared with you a folder where I was keeping some specific information along with some links, and my plan is to continue to work on that folder, if I'm, if I'm able to do it at least once a week, so that I can keep it updated. But please feel free to just go into that folder and check whenever you need to, you might be able to find links to some specific information that you might be looking for. Just another way of facilitating the communication between us. And then Minnesota School Board Association, if you remember, they sent us information a couple months ago about a program they were starting this year, which is called Leading for the Future. And they asked school board members to apply, and I applied for the program, because I have so much free time, but I applied for the program, and I got in. So they have about 20 board members from across the state who will be participating in this program, looking into ways of, you know, how do we, how do we lead in a time of crisis, in a time of change, and how do we look at education from a new perspective as well? So I will tell you more as I know more, but this will be with the University of St. Thomas and the organization Knowledge Works. So... So I'm very pleased to be, um, working with Minnesota School Board Association on that. Um, and then finally, once again, um, the AMSD. Um, I attended that meeting as well, so I just wanna say thank you to our legislators from Bloomington who were able to be there, uh, that day, so. And definitely, Director Bibi, those will be things that we will be bringing as Legislative Committee to the school board. We'll be discussing those and bringing to the board very soon. Okay, well, good. So let's move into superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Corbin. School board members, the viewing audience have several topics to share. On behalf of our school board and, and administration, we look forward to welcoming back our youngest learners, elementary and early learning students to in-person schooling, starting on Tuesday, January 19th. Now, this is a friendly reminder that our fourth community engagement event will be held tomorrow evening. This event will be live virtual, will be a live virtual event carried by BECTV from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. The event will feature school and district leaders sharing informational plans on the return to traditional learning for early childhood, preschool, and elementary students. And an update on the readiness of our secondary schools to shift to hybrid learning when COVID case counts allow. Like other community engagement events, viewers will be, will have a chance to submit questions prior to and during the event. A Google form is available on the district website to submit your questions or comments. Okay, another topic, change in testing site. The Minnesota Department of Health Community Testing Site at Ridgeview Elementary will cease operations on Wednesday, this Wednesday. Testing will shift to Creekside Community Center, and testing there will resume on Fri- this Friday. The Ridgeview site has consistently tested more people on a daily basis than any other statewide community testing site. According, this is according to the MDH. We'd like to thank the MDH, the Minnesota National Guard, and a Bloomington parent, Josh Serge Maki, who was governor-appointed to oversee the statewide community testing program and his team for this wonderful community partnership. The next topic is staff vaccinations. We're excited to share that tonight, our school nurses and special ed staff who work directly with students are being vaccinated, and another group will be vaccinated this Wednesday. The vaccinations are being administered by the Bloomington Public Health Staff. And finally, kindergartners, welcome, give welcome event and registration. Elementary schools will be hosting kindergarten welcome registration events. In January, if your child will be five years old by September 1st, 2021, we'll welcome them to enroll in kindergarten. We hope to hold welcome events in person if we're able to do so safely. If events must be held virtually, they'll be communicated to families through their neighborhood schools and through the district website. That concludes my report. Chair Corbin, I'll turn the microphone back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other business? Any other things? No? None? Then I would like to move adjournment of the meeting. Second, Director Olson. Director Olson, thank you. All those in favor of, um, adjourning our meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Director Bibi?
Aye.
Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Corbin. Thank you, and have a good night. This meeting is adjourned.